...if you vote badly on the city of Greenville, if you vote badly on how we do this most important local decision we've had in the last 10 years. ...if you vote badly on the city of Greenville, if you vote badly on how we do this most important local decision we've had in the last 10 years. We get bad representation particularly in downtown, thanks again. We get bad representation particularly in downtown, thanks again.
Mr. Mayor, now for response now. Mr. Mayor, now for response now. Mr. Mayor, now for response now.
Please. Please. Please.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Phil Boer. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Phil Boer. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Phil Boer. I guess one thing an alternate perspective could consider is notwithstanding the prior public meetings at Greenville, I guess one thing an alternate perspective could consider is, notwithstanding the prior public meetings at Greenville, I guess one thing an alternate perspective could consider is, notwithstanding the prior public meetings at Greenville, there will be no fewer than six starting tomorrow night through January, and there were presumably no less than, by my count, eight-plus weeks there will be no fewer than six starting tomorrow night through January, and there were presumably no less than, by my count, eight-plus weeks there will be no fewer than six starting tomorrow night through January, and there were presumably no less than, by my count, eight-plus weeks of reviewing the maps that are drafted now, and then a 2007, 365-day-a-year opportunity for citizens to comment with the website. of reviewing the maps that are drafted now, and then a 2007, 365-day-a-year opportunity for citizens to comment with the website. of reviewing the maps that are drafted now, and then a 2007, 365-day-a-year opportunity for citizens to comment with the website. So my whole point pointing that out is there is, as a matter of fact, weeks to go and many other meetings, So my whole point pointing that out is there is, as a matter of fact, weeks to go and many other meetings, So my whole point pointing that out is there is, as a matter of fact, weeks to go and many other meetings, and I know that our Primal News reporter is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? and I know that our Primal News reporter is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? and I know that our Primal News reporter is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? ...is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? ...is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? ...is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? ...is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? ...is presently working on additional coverage of the media for the issue of, right? In addition to the coverage you've already provided. 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 So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So, and appreciate your feedback and input, Brad, and I will make sure the follow-up's been admitted, that part of the process is put out. So it's not a fucking long time. 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 So it's not a fucking long time.
It means which of the... 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 It means which of the...
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. Open to the community, and then there'll be two city council members at which we, anybody who really has a good home, three minutes to say it. That's 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 it. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. And I don't know what the engagement will be with any of y'all for this meeting. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. Because, I'm not even sure if everybody can see them all. This is a... 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 This is a...
And future applicants, if they would apply for representative projects... ...have direct connections, and there's too many exceptions that are going on, and it leaves citizens with no representation when somebody recuses themselves. So we must have a clear split between service and financial gain. Additionally, I would ask for a motion tonight for a six-month moratorium on hotels in the office district for the December agenda for the Board of Zoning Affairs for short-term rent. If we don't stop this loophole of hotels, we're going to wind up with all this office history from the perimeter of the city being converted from residential to short-term rental. And I don't think that's what we need, because we need houses, not hotels. This pause to give council time to evaluate the response to the short-term rental. So let's just have it slow down, decide what's what goes in long-term and what's in short-term rental.
Section 100. Section 100 is going to be in here. Yeah. She had me in it earlier.
Mr. Mayor, again, counsel, when it's up there, probably a one minute. Brown people.
So we should close everything.
Before we get started, I like even why it was scheduled tonight, trying to be here. They're here before. Generally, please, I want to make my, that everyone will support the slide.
Why else would I solve it? You can just now, but...
My introduction. The end request was almost finished. Time to finally serve and evolve.
How we said.
And Marvin, and attorney, the most many people's for all day. The... Beside the court, I'm always... Heard the law, the majorations happen after. Questions were often tied during the clearings. People...
So they can try or something.
Staff can test, reading the last many hours of the evening, state of the work. But, stands are being disengaging the goodness of the question move. Work 25. Doing study, call to question very many, like foundation, follows recently. Better than... Arms of the... Go with skirmish, play. Well, I'm... The actions of the body have now come to question all the singular decision on our other regions of the town. Every decision we have been getting in the past can be... Question ethics of the ordinance, BCA, fire, future, grant, review of our decisions undermines very foundation in independent object destination of our people. For what's that consequence? That definitely possible. Thank you, the possibility of... We're here tonight to attempt to bring down the rhetoric for orders of the policies. We accept the policy now, hopefully with apologies offered.
Sort of... Sort of just great change. Check it.
Yeah, I just, I was just simply saying, there's at least a couple of board of zoning appeals members in attendance. I think maybe Chris has come to speak as well, but this will apply reactively, in my view, to Seth's comments, and then proactively anything that Chris or Kim may share. But thank you for your service and attention, it's longstanding, and how hard you work at it, we've seen it month after month. And it's widely known that it's an important job and difficult job from a complexity of issues standpoint in the reference section of the column.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Christopher Price, I live in 37 White, currently serve as the chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Volunteering in my life here. I'm here in front of you to offer my thanks as you for clarifying your statements from the past meeting, and also for your, your support of the Board of Zoning Appeals and its purpose. As you know, the members of the board volunteers show you the city in a specific role defined by state law. Both past and present, have made it the utmost priority to consistently follow the rules, both ethical and procedural. The board has always strived to find the facts and use reasonable and equitable development from the very beginning. I have all the faith that this will continue to occur during my remaining service and beyond in our quest to do as well. For the record, through the commentary surrounding one of the board's recent decisions, I'll throw out my time in future workshops, one-on-one, whatever the form may be, to provide feedback on any past decision, should you request. My hope is that such feedback will assist to inform the council on the decision so that any commentary or policy exploration will have a complete picture as to why a decision was made. I believe that, that with common respect and open dialogue, we can continue to make the city the best version of itself. Again, thank you for your support.
Can you turn that mic around?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, five percent, what you hear, what you listen, that was kind of good. You can hear us hearing it, but open ears. What's the sort of objective of you? They're here tonight to speak regarding the comments made by council. In reference to our board decision regarding improvement mixed-use facility of Wadehampton, both are... Somebody may not agree with the decision. We believe there were a number of comments were made about that decision. Comments such as the decisions made or given to the council on or to the board on so required, or that if the board is not following the procedures in the matter, we want them to treat a show of act of understanding of the actual responsibilities of the board and serve to remove the independent nature of the board from city council. In addition, the comment that this was a matter of ethics is really inappropriate. I appreciate your apology, thank you very much. But it could be potentially damaging to all our reputations, which we've worked so many years to maintain. And now my biggest concern is that these types of statements undermine the function of the board, and they raise the temperature of the public comment that we receive. That's what I'd like to try to avoid. Got a couple of recommendations. My first recommendation is, as Chris mentioned, that any city council member has a problem or has an issue with a decision, please come to us, we'll be glad to discuss it, we can explain the reasoning for our decision, and hopefully help you understand why we made the decision that we made. My second recommendation is that we have an appropriate meeting of members of our board and city council so that we can really help you and help you understand, box killing of our board, independent of the council, and that you can better define for us the expectations of the council with many strategic plans and goals of the same citizens.
We have a presentation. Mayor, I don't think Mr. Page has arrived yet. Just about next few minutes, we'll be getting your call. We have a appointment to be made, here in the morning.
Yes. Okay. Heather Redd, the house of authority, back to turn, and, um, met, and interviewed, full of the four patients, Johnson, who's four, five years term ending on October 31st, 2027.
Mr. Johnson's been, so not taking any nominations, if I all papers sound.
Thank you.
Thank you. Considered as evidence. Question approved.
Okay.
Motion second on the senate. Hold on.
Councilmember DeWorten. Senator. He is online, so that I cannot hear him. Okay. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
General, general, team.
An ordinance to annex approximately 4.83 acres of real property and 0.748 acres of adjacent right-of-way located at 20250 Executive Center Drive and to provide the zoning designation of C3 regional commercial district.
Victor Brooks.
Second.
Second.
Yes, sir, thank you. This continues our annexation efforts as our staff looks for opportunities through our water covenants and going back and reviewing some of former agreements to ensure that we have completed those annexation expectations. And so this evening, you'll have a multitude of items that are on your agenda because of the great work of the planning staff as we work towards annexation of the city.
Annex-a-thon tonight.
It is an annex-a-thon, I like that. I'll take it. I'll take that over, among other things, let's go for it.
Question about this one? Or call roll.
Councilmember DeWorten. Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 11.569 acres of real property and 4.542 acres of adjacent right-of-way located at 31 Fayette Drive and to provide the zoning designation of C3.
Second.
This is a, this is a large amount of acres. This is actually not under a water covenant. This is an opportunity for us to work with the developer on a potential project for the, for the property.
Or call roll.
And Mayor, it's my understanding they're working on audio, so I'm going to continue to call council members DeWorten's name until we hear from them. Okay. Councilmember DeWorten. Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.887 acre of real property and 0.034 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at Malden Road and to provide the zoning designation of C3. Second.
Or call roll.
Councilmember DeWorten. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.75 acres of acre of real property and 0.155 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 525 Concord Road and to provide the zoning designation of C3.
Move to bro. Second. Or call roll.
Councilmember DeWorten. Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.681 acres of real property and 0.06 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 308 Mills Avenue and to provide the zoning designation of OD.
Second.
Seven.
Second.
Councilmember DeWorten. Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.6341 acres of real property and 0.679 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 125 Halton Road and provide the zoning designation of C2.
Second. I am... All right.
And...
Friday. No, it's not. No, sorry.
No, this is for commercial operating, one of our government halls.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Thank you very much for all your support for annexation, and I just want to thank our staff.
Thank you.
Who continue to plug away at this every month and continue bringing these annexations forward.
Taking some bites out of this doughnut hole area.
Yes, we are.
Or, so on the, on the council district now, still a lot of the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon, for that annex upon.
An ordinance to appropriate 1,400,000 in the miscellaneous grants fund for the 2022 land and water conservation fund award. Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White. An ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a real property exchange agreement with Meadow Street Opportunities Area, LLC. Second.
Second. This is very significant, long time coming, first time. Up there to say, you know, just caught it.
Yes, you caught me off guard before, but this one is... So, so yeah, this is a critical piece, so we can continue to finalize our design approvals and financing for the plan. Housing development we have on the site, which I've shared some renderings, previous meetings, and... So this is just a critical piece to get in this, but finish line, so we can move forward.
Stand. Stand, stand aside, but...
Yes.
I think it's a little bit in allowance for area parking and access.
Yes.
Sorry, it's the way I talk. Um... Is this the one where we have an attachment A, and the attachment A is forthcoming, or is that the way? Yes, we're continuing to finalize the PSA in only part of second reading. Okay. But because this is in a messy, we have to, we have to close by the end of year. Okay, perfect. But we'll see, we'll have the attachment signed for that. That's right. And we continue to get all of our closing documents and our final reports, et cetera.
Great. Thank you. Or call roll.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
An ordinance to authorize the execution of the development agreement with Austin Park, LA City as a pilot project for the development of affordable housing initiatives.
Second. Second, second.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, council, this is just a continuation of what you guys talked about a couple of weeks ago, um, and the development agreement is in the legal team's hands now, so we should hopefully have that also done by in two weeks.
Excellent.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
We needed a catchy name with that red, red tape on the name. It's a very thoughtful resolution of the values issue, so it's a good model. 16A resolutions.
A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding and automatic aid agreement between the city of Greenville for and on behalf of the Greenville Fire Department and Wade Hampton Fire and Sewer District for certain emergency incidences, specifically structured fires within the designated areas of the city and the district.
So...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, something we've been working on for the last several years. This is great, this is Wade Hampton, uh, special purpose history, along with some others, this one's Wade Hampton. This is assist on the area on the east side of the city, and actually there just was Wade Hampton, Palm Road, Old Street, um, Congress, and areas of public actions in. And ensure that we have the most effective responsible, which we love, on Wade Hampton ourselves, to have additional firefighters in the same, the other social provider. We estimate probably about 50 calls additional for us and for them.
We estimate probably about 50 calls additional for us and put them on a yearly basis in structure fires.
Appreciate that. 15B.
Council, to authorize the purchase of property located at the intersection of Malden Road and Conestew Lake Road from Conestew Foundation, Inc., for the purpose of raising occupancy, open space, and to authorize the use of funds from the Open Space Acquisition Project.
Second. Be a good person. This is the first time we've actually appropriated money from the city.
This resolution operates as the city manager to use funds from the Open Space Acquisition Project, which is appropriated officially or to be. For the purchase of 3.7 acres on the whole property is contiguous to Lindwood Soccer Complex and can be used for potential, should be a loan.
All right. 16C.
Brian Round, share the ask from Greenwell Housing Fund, and then either myself or Walter Goldthut, who's out in either somewhere on the floor, answer any questions you have.
Thank you. So this, this allows the city to serve as sort of a support or a backstop for Greenwell Housing Fund in, in the transaction and is structured to mitigate risk both for the lender and for the city. And given, you know, the age of Greenwell Housing Fund being a newer organization, this will allow us to get in some ways better terms from our lender, but also provides a bridge to future appropriations, which gives them comfort. And, and the planned project involves improvements to the property. And just keep in mind that when we do that, we are, you know, hiring people, there's a sort of a force multiplier at play when we do these projects. The current, currently the property does not have any voucher holders, and when we are involved in these properties, we always take vouchers. So part of this is increasing the supply of quality affordable housing to take a voucher. And this particular property sits in a premium location with 212 units. So a really important project for us and a useful tool that we're asking the city to provide.
Maintenance of existing affordable housing initiative. Where exactly is the unit, you mentioned how the units are there, where, where exactly is the site?
Oh, it's where Lounsville Road crosses over.
By Kenworth Road.
Yeah, and on Century.
I just wanted to say a quick word, where this is.
Very good. I'm a mystery.
Now, can I ask a question to Matt and Brian, you stay there too, because I just want clarification. This is where we are being the backstop guarantor, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and we will continue, if it's the will of council, to provide an annual contribution towards the Greenwell Housing Fund as we have been doing. Of course, that's up for, for discussion every year, but traditionally we've been, we've been satisfying agreement 2040, all of the 2.5 million per annum out of the CIP. That won't be affected, and stop me if I'm wrong, that won't be affected unless for some extraordinary reason this guarantee was called upon.
So the, the form of the current contribution agreement is that Greenville Housing Fund would assign their next two locations from the city. So you all would deliberate and make your appropriations as normal, and then Greenville Housing Fund would then assign those annual contributions to a reserve fund for this deal for the next two cycles.
Okay, and then that serves as the backstop.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this is separate from any discussion of an accelerated funding mechanism that you brought, that I do want to reiterate, I hope it's part of our discussion in the council retreat, because I do think that the opportunity is there to at least consider what can we do to have a more accelerated impact on this most, most challenging problem we have, so.
Yeah, this is part of the free, but nowhere quite in council, so we're a recommendation and a potential, a reading light for the bond appropriation.
Thanks.
Okay, 15C. Mayor, we do have Mr. Jim Headley, who's the executive director of South Carolina Recreation Parks Association, I bet that asked Mayor and council to come down and receive his support. Eric.
Yes, we're just. We got nothing now, and thus.
Just kind of be someone. Century in the making. Unity Park is a few sixty-third park that merges what for once two segregated parks in pace, I'll mention to the legacies of two historic neighborhoods, Southern Side and West Greenville, where residents describe a painful history of neglect, environmental abuse, and racial inequity. Unity Park features four state-of-the-art playgrounds, including a 5,000-square-foot splash pad, two expansive green spaces, a 10,000-square-foot locker center, basketball courts, and a historic baseball field located on the site of the former Mayberry Park, which was built in 1925. Phase two will include the restoration of four acres of urban wetlands and construction of a top drawer classroom as part of an ADA accessible boardwalk, renovation of the historic Mayberry Park baseball field, and construction of an observation tower for first responders. One of the many things that sets Unity Park apart is the fact that nearly nine acres of prime land owned by the city adjacent to the park have been set aside for affordable housing, serving as a bulwark against the pressures of gentrification already impacting the area. It is with great honor that we recognize the city of Greenville with the 2022 Parks Excellence Award for population over 30,000.
Then when you're German, it's like you're between lunch, right? Mayor, and again, council, thank you very much for all your support you've done over the years for public parks recreation. As each of you know, you have very difficult jobs when it comes to the building up of funds and where this is going to go, where that's going to go.